All right. Calling this September 18th meeting of the Mount Lake Terrace City Council to order, please rise and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jennifer, can you roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray?
Present.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Present.
Mayor Protem Wall?
Ten, here.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Here.
Councilmember Woodard?
Here.
And Mayor Matsumoto Wright?
Here via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Very good. All right. City manager, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
No late changes, Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Very good. Moving on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up in person or online?
We have two who signed up to speak online. The first one is Adam. Adam, you'll have five minutes at the podium.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so thanks for hearing my comments tonight. I just want to talk a bit about Flock and COVID again. I just don't understand how the council is still planning to move forward with Flock. After all of the research Dustin has done and provided to the council, after all of the legitimate and serious concerns residents have raised, after all of the lies Flock has been caught in, after learning Flock's history of corruption and working with ICE, how can you still seriously be planning on installing these cameras? It's just beyond nonsensical. We don't have anything resembling a serious crime problem in Mount Lake Terrace. We know Flock doesn't actually work to prevent crime. We know Flock lies. We know Flock works with ICE. We know Flock will leave the city open to expensive lawsuits. So again, why? And at a time like this, when ICE is literally occupying American cities and the president is issuing executive orders that criminalize being homeless and criminalize free speech, do you seriously think Flock, a company which inherently is a tool of fascism, won't share data with ICE and federal law enforcement, when asked? And when residents and workers of Mount Lake Terrace inevitably get detained due to the city's best negligent decision to install these cameras, what is the council prepared to do? Saying whoops or sorry doesn't cut it when people are plucked from their homes and shipped off to be held indefinitely in dangerous detention centers. How will you sleep at night? Moving forward with these cameras would be a straight-up indefensible decision. You're needlessly inviting a cancer into our town and paying for the luxury to do so. And meanwhile, our low-crime town is inundated with the actual threat of COVID-19. I'm just going to quickly read some statistics off for you that you might not be aware of. As of this past Monday, the country is having over 1.3 million new COVID infections a day. One in 38 people are actively infectious nationally, and the situation is even worse in Washington, where one in 27 people are actively infectious. Actuary data is showing that the U.S. is still having 3,365 COVID deaths a week. That's more than a 9/11 every week. And this week's new infections alone are going to result in 2 million brand-new or worse-than-long COVID cases. But focus on that one in 27 number for now. That means in a room of 10 people, there's a 1-in-3 chance someone is actively infectious, ready to infect others. In a room of 25 people, a 62% chance. In a room of 100 people, a 98% chance. So I ask you, how many kids, teachers, and other employees are in our schools every day? How many people are in our assisted-living facilities? How are they supposed to protect themselves? Unlike crime, COVID is a real and grave problem in Mount Lake Terrace. And the tragedy of it is that we do have affordable tools that are proven to work against it, to the point where every single infection is entirely preventable. I'm urging the council to invest in those tools. And 95 masks, Corsi cubes, HEPA purifiers, and remote alternatives to in-person activities, instead of committing more money to an evil fraudulent company like Flock. I'll just end quickly by thanking Erin Murray, Steve Woodard, and William Page. The people of Mount Lake Terrace recognize and appreciate your leadership, and were collectively baffled as to why the rest of the council has failed to join you in rising to what this moment calls for. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Anybody else?
Yes, the other one who signed up to speak online is Jillian. You'll have five minutes to speak.
I am also here to talk about Flock. I spoke about it last week, too. And I'm also just trying to understand why we are going ahead with this system. Is it to catch criminals on camera? Because I have to say, as someone who walks and jogs almost every day, I am acutely aware of the buzz of Ring cameras following my movement on the sidewalks and streets of our town. Like, so many people have Ring cameras. And if you've ever binge-watched Dateline, which I do a lot, it's like one of my favorite shows, you'll know that crimes are caught on home security cameras all the time. I don't have a Ring camera. I don't, I can't say I love them, but my tax dollars aren't paying for them. So if someone wants to have one, that's their, that's their choice. And at least ICE doesn't have carte blanche access to these privately-owned cameras. So if Ring cameras are providing individual residents with camera security, what exactly is Flock supposed to do? And speaking of all this alleged criminal activity that we're attempting to keep in check, what are the stats? Because obviously, all communities have crime, but does the level of crime in our town justify installing a surveillance system that has been exploited by ICE? I want to believe that the council members are truly acting in our best interest, but Flock feels like kind of an obvious grift to me, and I really do want to understand why so many of you are on board with this plan. Erin Murray and Steve Woodard certainly had the good sense to oppose this dangerous scam from the start. Then William Page actually did the hard thing and changed his vote because he couldn't, in good consciousness, sit with Flock's lack of transparency about its relationships with federal agencies like Homeland Security. I believe him when he said he was misled. What did the rest of you have to say about that? If a company has already lied to you, why would you keep doing business with them? If you sign a contract with a business and the first thing you need to do is create an oversight committee to make sure they're not being shady, isn't that a sign that you shouldn't do business with them? Do any of you see these major red flags? Do you just not care? As our elected leaders, you have a responsibility to listen to citizens on this issue. Do you not think you have a responsibility to reevaluate your decisions when you find out Flock has lied? How will you feel when Flock inevitably shares data with a federal agency in order to destroy lives in our community? I know none of you are going to respond directly to my questions tonight, but I hope they stay with you. And I really do hope you have the strength to be honest with yourselves and make a better decision for the sake of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Anybody signed up in person?
Yes. First, I wanted to ask Michael Ness, are you going to speak directly on? Yes, so we'll wait till the public hearing for that. Okay. Next is Kim Guadalupe. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
Good evening. I'm trying to think how to start off. I don't want to be here today. I don't want to bring more complaints to the city council. It is not my choice as a single mom with recently widowed my son being here. This is not where I want to be at 7 o'clock at night. I'm reaching out because my attorney had sent a letter back on September 9th to all of the city council, as well as the city, for what's been an ongoing, I don't know, eight months now of nonstop harassment from the city. I've been a business owner in the city of Mount Lake Terrace without issues for over a decade. And when I sold my commercial office building on 220th and moved to Regis, which is a fully-staffed office, when I purchased another property that I live at and own and stored my personal belongings there, I have had nothing but problems from the city telling me that I need to get a home business license, occupation license, because I live there and I work on my laptop from there. I say to all of you, how many times have you opened your laptop at home? Should you have a separate license for that? I mean, it's literally ridiculous. And like I said, I've been a business owner in the city of Mount Lake Terrace for over 10 years without any issue. Recently, my home business occupation license was approved after, and it would not have been approved had I not hired an attorney, after months of back and forth, after thousands of dollars to the city. And just so the council knows, and I'm not sure if you're aware, a home business occupation license is $1,000 to start. Then you have to pay another $1,000 deposit for them to, I don't know, we'll say evaluate it, right? So they did the right thing and refunded half of my money. So that's nice. The, I don't know, probably near almost $10,000 I spend in attorney's fees to stay a properly licensed business in the city of Mount Lake Terrace is appalling. The code enforcement, Ms. Laura Stevenson, who's only been employed with the city, my understanding is a little over a year, obviously needs some coaching. My personal situation is I have a neighbor who lives two doors down from me that's been operating a business for, I have no idea how long, because I'm new to the area where I live, on 214th. And so I brought that to their attention. I filed an official complaint because I know how it works. You have to have the, you know, thing in process. And so not having any confidence in city staff, I did a records request 45 days later to see what happened. She closed out the business operating from home. That was on Google, that's address to the house, all of the things, right? She closed it out as properly licensed. So of course, then, we follow up with the city again, and I'm asking, well, what was conducted? What research was done? It takes literally, I don't know, I'm going to be generous with five seconds to get on the Labor and Industries website, type in a business name, and it'll tell you where they're registered, what licenses they have, that kind of stuff, right? And I should say, my business is a handyman and remodel company. And so, again, being properly licensed for over a decade in the city of Mount Lake Terrace, I reached out, and then all their comment was, well, we, and they wouldn't ever really answer what she did, which of course was nothing. And I said, I have the records that show she went into it, because you guys have a software system that shows all the entries that they make. She went in there, she didn't do anything. She closed it out, they reopened it because I did a public records request, and I just, I'm asking the city, what do I need to do next? We sent a letter, and my attorney sent a letter on September 9th, sent a copy to the city council as well, asked me if I've received a response from the city, even acknowledging that they've received it. The answer to that is no. Of course, I haven't received a response. So then, because the city gave me yet another condition and another deadline, that I needed to get an additional license, and I needed to have it by September 14th, so I called the Department of Revenue, I walked through all the steps to do that, and the agent that was helping me with the Department of Revenue kept saying, why are you getting a business license if you have no employees going there, you have no customers going there, you have no signage? Like, why are you getting that? You don't need that, you already have a license. And I say, I'm well aware, I've spent about $10,000 in attorney's fees going back and forth, and I came to a city council meeting at the end of June, I think, when you guys were meeting and doing the stuff for the ADUs and all of that stuff. I was here and I spoke that day. The only reason why I was here was because I was having a problem with the same license about parking. And it's just been nonstop. So I'm asking the city council, because I, you know, need to get off so other people can speak, what should my next step be? Because I can't even get a response from the city. So what should I do next?
We're not able to respond from the DIAS, but first of all, we have received your email and had a chance to review that. Appreciate you coming tonight and sharing your comments. We'll have the city manager follow up with you directly within the next day or couple of days, and-
Who's the city manager?
Jeff Knighton is our city manager.
Do you have a card with you?
And-
No, okay.
And then he'll follow up with us, the city council, to let us know what the status is and keep us posted.
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Very good. Jennifer, anybody else signed up?
That's it for the general public comment.
All right. Thank you all. So moving on to the consent agenda, the city manager has an update on item C of the consent agenda, so we'll let him speak to that first, and then we'll get to it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just wanted to address a question by councilmember Page last week about calling references for the consultant that we selected for the branding and marketing opportunity. We did contact all those references. I'm not going to read all of everything that they provided to us, but I did want to point out a couple of things. First, from the city of Park Ridge, they said one of the greatest strengths, one of Altogether's greatest strengths, was the ability to navigate change with key stakeholders and elected officials. So I thought that was a good comment. And another one from the village of Antioch, put together a brand-guided marketing plan for us, and our village, and more importantly, our business community, loved the placemaking project and the scavenger hunt, which put together a scavenger hunt as an event. Both got good press regionally and brought people to shop and dine in the community. So I thought those were two great references, and I just wanted to follow up with councilmember Page's concern.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that follow-up. I think the boots on the ground is always a lot better than just looking to see what some piece of paper that, who knows where it came from. So thank you for the follow-up.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. So consent agenda, does anybody wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Councilmember Sonmore?
I'd like to remove item number C.
Okay. Item number C has been, will be removed. Do we have a motion to, any other items to be removed? If not, do we have a motion to approve items A and B? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move that we approve consent, the consent agenda items A and B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilmember Ryan. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving consent agenda items A and B, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, consent agenda has been approved, so item C, which has been removed from the consent agenda, we should address now.
Following the present, thank you, following the presentation last week, happy to answer any questions that the council has.
All right. Councilmember Sonmore?
I don't have any questions. I just have a bunch of comments, and I know I'm going to be unpopular on this, but I have to point out, a lot of times our budgets at our home are unpopular. We have gone through this process before. It's, I believe it's about $68,000. We have a full-time communication director, and we have a full-time economic specialist director. If you look at the city of Lynnwood and Edmonds, they are cutting jobs. I do not want to cut jobs in Mount Lake Terrace, but I want to point out, I believe our communications specialist and our economic director could handle these tasks. And our task from this contract is, one, project kickoff and alignment, two, brand and communication audit, three, community survey, four, community cultural assets, five, stakeholder listening session, marketing positions, and strategic visiting workshop. And I believe those are all things that the city should be able to do. I also heard a lot last time that we can't wait to tell our story in Mount Lake Terrace. Well, I have to say, our story hasn't changed. If you look at our 50th birthday, we have our story out there. Our story really hasn't changed a whole lot, and I do not believe by having a marketing strategy and new flyers and a branding is going to make developers flock to our four square miles. I believe you have to look at land consolidation. And one of the things that we used to do all the time is the council would get to their, gather with the community, and we would talk about what we wanted in downtown. And I haven't heard that. Our economic director, we haven't even talked to him about what we want in the downtown. We haven't even talked about what we want in the downtown, or what we want to bring into the city, and that can be done very simply through a retreat. I think spending $68,000 on something like this, I don't think the return on investment is enough when we have a full-time person out there looking for businesses to bring in, working with contractors and development. If it had worked before, I think we would have had more of a downtown. Right now, if we were going to say, what is our story going forward? I think all the council would agree, no more apartments. We don't want our downtown to be full of apartments. I think we have, what is it, 600, 1,000, oh, about 1,500 new apartments coming in pretty soon, if not more. And we've talked about that, and we've talked about the shadowing of apartments and what it does to downtown, but I'm saying all this, and I would be voting no on this item.
Thank you, councilmember Sonmore. Any other comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Altogether LLC for citywide branding, placemaking, and marketing strategy? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So moved.
And do we have a second?
I would second it.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the professional services agreement with Altogether LLC. Do we, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, the motion has been approved, so we are moving on to the proclamation for Constitution Week. Councilmember Page?
Liz, how you doing? All right, is it on? It's on. Thank you. I am joined by Liz Runkel, Region of the Lady Sterling Chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And I'm going to be reading the city of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Mayor Kiyoko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the Mount Lake Terrace City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And as our citizens, to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, by visioningly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained, proclaimed by the city council on September 18th, 2025. Would you like to have, speak?
Just as the new regent of the Lady Sterling Chapter of the DAR, I appreciate your willingness to promote the proclamation, and we will be posting it in a display at the Mount Lake Terrace Public Library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I think we're probably going to be a few pictures.
Okay. I think she's got the message.
Yeah, pictures with you. Okay. I want you to come over there.
Okay. This is the question.
Okay. Bye-bye. Thank you. Thank you. All right. I think we're probably going to be a few pictures.
Okay. I think she's got the message.
Okay. Yeah, pictures with you. Okay. I want you to come over there.
Okay. This is the question.
Okay.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Next up, we have our review public hearing and vote on the ordinance adopting our urban forest management plan.
There we go. Hello, council. Nice to see you all again. Mayor, Mayor Protem? New friends? Old friends. I'm excited to be doing a review presentation on the urban forest management plan that we discussed at last week's work session, and I'll be including a little extra information in there just to kind of highlight a couple of components I thought were interesting or related to questions that council had, and, but we'll be running it as kind of an overall overview, and then, of course, plenty of time for questions if anyone has them. For those folks who I haven't met, or if folks are watching online, I'm Patrick Hutchins. I'm the city's environmental programs manager, which is a retitling of the same role that Laura Reed used to have. So I'm new Laura, as I'm learning everyone in the industry calls me, which is great. There are big shoes to fill, but I'm excited by the opportunity to do so. So I'm going to pop up our presentation here, put that into presentation mode. Oh, hmm, that's backwards. There we go. Okay. So just to kind of reiterate a little bit of the overview of the Urban Forest Management Plan, or UFMP, it's a guidance document which has a similar scope to the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan. It lays out concrete goals for retaining and even growing the city's urban forests with specific strategies for achieving those goals and metrics for assessing the success of those. The plan itself was created in collaboration with community, along with city departments, and was a major effort of Laura's last days here at the city, although I hear she is enjoying her retirement quite a lot and doing a lot of traveling right now. But I know this was something very near and dear to her heart, and she's excited to see it moving forward when we've chatted in the past. So in addition to the components that I'm going to talk about a little bit that were supported by community specifically, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, as well as the Planning Commission, have been presented with the plan, and both have given the recommendation that council adopt the plan. And so the ask on this evening is that we have a, continue to have our robust discussion about it, and if council is satisfied with the plan as it's written, move to adopt the urban forest management plan. One other thing I wanted to highlight, too, that I forgot to mention last time, was that in our city strategic plan, the Vision 2044, adoption of an urban forest management plan is a specific goal that's called out in that plan. So that is Environment Element Policy EN 2.1, Adopt an Urban Forest Management Plan. So by, if we do try, decide to adopt tonight, you can all pull out your marked-up Vision 2044 and check that one off for as one of your goals. But we're going to dive straight in for those folks who weren't here last time, and just to kind of review. So these are the main components we're going to go over, mainly going to talk about why urban forest matters, what we learned as we did the process to produce this urban forest management plan, the vision, goals, and key findings, and then some of the strategies for implementation. So it was a big team that put this together. There were environmental programs staff, community and economic development staff, parks and recreation staff, community members, residents, and we were able to do a lot of this preparatory work through a grant from the Department of Natural Resources, Urban and Community Forestry Program, which was a really great highlight. That's another program that we can access further grant funding and resources and technical assistance from, and so we were really excited to start working with them and kind of give ourselves that introduction. We also worked with a consultant called Planet Geo, and Matt Ermson from that project presented last week, and then had some support for some of our community outreach through Starbird Environmental, which is a women-owned environmental consulting firm. So why trees matter in general, there's a great number of reasons, and we'll go into them in more detail, but on the high level, they improve public health, mental well-being, and air quality. They cool neighborhoods, they reduce stormwater, increase property values, and the livability of the community. And so all in all, we would consider them vital green infrastructure, just as important as things like solar panels or our stormwater systems. We learned a lot doing a full canopy assessment. We looked primarily at city-managed street trees, and we learned that actually, this needs an update already, after this year Recreation and Parks has been really going hard on installing trees, and we have almost 7,000 city-managed trees now, which is a lot. They're generally pretty diverse, but we do see a few types being a little overrepresented in our canopy, which creates potential- And so all in all, we would consider them vital green infrastructure, just as important as things like solar panels or our stormwater systems. We learned a lot doing a full canopy assessment. We looked primarily at city-managed street trees. And we learned that actually this needs an update already after this year. Recreation and Parks has been really going hard on installing trees, and we have almost 7,000 city-managed trees now, which is a lot. They're generally pretty diverse, but we do see a few types being a little overrepresented in our canopy, which creates potential risks to health. So if you have a disease come through and all the trees are the same type, but that disease only affects that type of tree, then you can lose a lot of your canopy. But if you have a more diverse canopy, it can resist those kinds of risks. So one of the things we learned is that we could do a lot to diversify our canopy. That is also includes dimensions of diversity beyond species, but also size. So we learned that the majority of our trees are 12 to 18 inches or smaller in diameter. And so they are kind of in the prime of their life. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute with an interesting graphic. We found that generally speaking, our trees are doing pretty well in terms of health. But the majority of deficiencies or issues with trees are human caused or are related to poor maintenance. And so there's a lot of opportunity for us to improve the health of our forests and keep it healthy rather than trying to bring it back from a deficit, which is really great sign. We'll dig into this a little more too, but we looked at some of the economic benefits of trees. So trees provide a variety of different services. Some of the most notable are carbon service, services. So a tree actually stores a certain amount of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere every year as it builds its wood. And so that provides a service of removing those heat-trapping gases from the atmosphere. And so our street trees alone provide about $18,000 in that service. But if we consider all of the trees within the City of Mount Lake Terrace, that number goes up by a factor of 10 and is about $116,000. We also see major connections between stormwater and trees. Trees can store about half of the rain that falls on them inside their tissues. And so that is water that never has to go into our infrastructure and cause the impacts that normal use does. So they are representing major cost savings in those regards. We also wanted to look at some of the challenges to implementing the Urban Forest Management Plan. One of them is that we benchmarked Mount Lake Terrace against an average of kind of best-fit regional cities and found that we spend about half the amount per capita on these tree care practices as those best-matched cities. And so there's a lot of opportunity for growth. That per capita total dollar amount is only about $5. So even if we were to double our capacity, it would only cost an individual taxpayer about $11 a year. So it's a pretty, we're doing a really good job with the resources that we have, and we have a lot of opportunity to grow without overloading our system. We also see some threats from invasive species and from pests like the Emerald Ash Borer, the Gold Birch Borer and the Douglas Fir Beetle. And then we see the pressures that development puts on trees. Compacted soil, less access to water, these are things that all urban trees experience. And so thankfully, trees and cities have both been around for quite a long time. And so we know that there are engineering solutions that we can implement as well as design solutions. And those include things like those ones in the bottom corner there. So the plan gives us kind of a long-term vision. It's grounded in community values, it's rooted in equity, and it's focused on resilience. And it aligns with the sustainability strategy and the comprehensive plan, like I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. The plan lays out five goals for retaining and growing our urban forests. So the first is to engage, which is a combination of education outreach and volunteerism practices. Maintain the trees that we already have, which would include proactive and safe tree care, especially through expertise in the ability to care for trees. Grow the canopy, so actually expanding it, particularly in areas that have the highest need. And we discussed pretty heavily some of the equity components, which is actually something on the last slide over here that I forgot to mention. You can see the tree equity scores, so the areas that have the greatest or least number of trees relative to the population and a variety of identity factors in that, including race and ethnicity, poverty level and or sorry, income level and disability status. So we are growing in those high-capacity areas. And then we want to retain to protect the existing trees through policy and planning and use data and monitoring to adapt as conditions change because we know that change is the only constant. And so the no-goal gives us that opportunity. That engage goal is focused on developing an outreach strategy, having a tree ambassador program of folks who are community members who have been trained and educated in tree care so that they can train and educate other community members, and then volunteer tree stewards who care for city-owned trees out of care and pride for their community, providing technical assistance for residents, and giving multilingual education and outreach, and partnering with schools and community organizations. As terms of the maintain goal, we want to address maintenance needs before issues arise. This benefits safety and presents a cost-savings opportunity. One way we can do that is to improve our pruning cycles and increase staff training. This would also reduce preventable defects and risk, and it invests in the long-term health of the trees, which are living things and not just kind of background. The grow goal intends to actually expand our canopy. So right now, we have about a 32% coverage in canopy where we aim to increase that to 38%. So Councilmember Page had asked some questions about what specific metrics are and what would success look like. So having a 38% cover would be one of those metrics. And we would be able to determine that through combinations of remote sensing and canopy assessments. And if we were able to achieve that 38% by the year 2030, then we would be, or 2050, sorry, then we would be able to move to a no-net-loss system. So the goal would be, okay, we hit our intended target. Let's figure out how we can ensure that we remain at that target. In order to do that, we should focus on heat-prone, underserved neighborhoods like we see in the equity map and do a right-tree-right-place system by using climate resilient and diverse species. The retain goal is one that we kind of focused on a lot, so I have a couple of little brief extra slides about why we want to do this and how we can do it and how we're already doing it at the city. But the intent is to strengthen the protection policies and permitting standards, encourage tree preservation and development, and then to support property owners with retention resources, especially if they have those particularly large trees, which Mayor Masamoto Wright last week had a really good point about. Just because you have a big tree on your property doesn't mean that you have the financial capacity to care for that tree. And so we want to consider that component of equity as well when we're thinking about retaining trees as well as planting them. So it was an appreciated comment. Thank you. So just to highlight some of the kind of legacy that we would be leaving by adopting an urban forest management plan that effectively preserves our trees is, kind of blows your mind in how long they can live. These are some of our kind of most notable native species. The shortest-lived them, of them are those black cottonwoods that are over in Ballenger Park, and they can live 80 to 100 years. Our longest-lived trees like Douglas firs and westerninceders can live upwards of 1,000 years. So by preserving these trees, you might literally be leaving a thousand-year legacy on the City of Mount Lake Terrace. And that's not always something someone can say, so that's pretty cool. And just because I'm a tree nerd, something interesting, these are averages. Many of these trees have been known to live longer than this, but this is typical for these trees, so pretty incredible. One of the things that's interesting about the age of the trees too is, one of the things we hear is that, oh, well, the tree is just getting too old and it's dying. But if you look at this comparison of 1936 Mount Lake Terrace to 2025, you can see that prior to, or prior to the early 1900s, the area that is Mount Lake Terrace was kind of stripped down to the studs. It was mostly bare ground, not a lot of trees left. It was a heavy harvest area. And so the trees that we see now are growing back from that experience in the early 1900s. So we don't really have that many trees that should be near the end of their lifespans if they're able to live 500, 800, 1,000 years. So when we invest in their care, we're really ensuring that these trees that are in the prime of their life are getting to experience the prime of their life in the most positive way possible, and then are also providing us with amazing services, which I think is kind of the definition of being a good neighbor, which is I know something the city values. I wanted to just quickly mention that we did, you all did adopt the Tree Code recently and remind our community members that these are resources too. So we have a series of protections in place for trees as development is happening. These different components are required in the permitting process and does include a fee-in-lu opportunity for folks who are trying to bring in businesses and properties that we reasonably think are valuable but are not able to meet these. And that fee-in-lu goes into our tree fund, which allows us to spend those resources on planting in other places so that we can do that no-net-loss system or allows us to invest in other resources that preserve trees in the long term. Then as far as our no-goal, the intention is to update our tree inventory in real-time as well as our tree canopy data, which is more about coverage than number of trees because some trees have very large crowns, and so one tree can cover a lot of area. But we do that every, about every two years, which would give us a good understanding of how things are changing. Would give us an opportunity to track those performance metrics and adjust our strategies and supports our transparency through public reporting on our webpage. So some of the strategies for implementation, we have to coordinate across departments and across city initiatives, and the plan really does that with a lot of intention. And we need to align the UMP, UFMP with the comprehensive and parks plans, which we're already doing and can continue to do as those update regularly, monitor, adapt and report progress, and of course, hold ourselves accountable as we have these goals. Success itself would look like a healthier, more diverse and a better distributed tree canopy. It would include increased community involvement and tree retention and would show strong alignment with the city's policies and climate goals. As, if we do decide to adopt, it's also great to just get, continue getting the word out, help share and support the plan across departments and to the public, encourage stewardship through local programs and just be a champion for trees, which I see many of you doing already. And then what will it cost us if we do nothing? So I want to draw back to that picture of the ecosystem services that trees provide. So $2.2 million in value from trees every year. That's about 2/3 of the cost of one of the water quality retrofit projects that we're working on. So if we were to lose all the trees in the city, which would be difficult, we would have to either have no services that the city, community members are used to being provided by the trees, or we would have to spend that money to make up for the fact that we lost those services from the trees. And so that means that we can't do other things. So this really is a dollars and cents value benefit to preserve our trees and use the plan to do so. And something I just wanted to highlight too, the graphic up there talks about those four components overall and then the three specific ones. But it doesn't include the electricity cost savings that community members and the city gets from the shading effects of trees. Passive cooling is a really valuable tool, and it can reduce cooling costs by about 50% on extremely hot days, which, you know, it was 90 on Tuesday. I think we can all appreciate the benefit there. It doesn't include costs of mental and physical health services that are diverted from having to be utilized because people live in a space where they can calm down and feel safe. And then it also doesn't include the cost of dead tree removal due to having a more diverse canopy that resists pests and disease. And then also not just focusing out for a deficit point, we have the potential to gain income from new residents choosing Mount Lake Terrace because it's a beautiful place to live. I think I mentioned it last time, but if people want to live somewhere where the trees have all been cut down already, there are other places they can live. But if they want to be in that city, on the hill, by the water, in the trees, this is the place they can do it. There's also some benefits around what types of landscaping we can do. I'm really excited to expand the types of native species that we are utilizing and considering climate futures where things are going to be drier and putting in plants that are more resistant to drought. And if we do use those sustainable landscapes, some studies have shown that we could be using 89% less water to care for our trees, reducing our green waste by 70%, and then reducing maintenance hours that are specifically dedicated to landscaping by 80%. So that would free up city resources for other opportunities. And so there's this kind of benefit after benefit after benefit in this regard. So generally, why do we want to adopt now? It supports our climate, equity and livability goals. It builds on community input, puts in technical best practices. It establishes proactive budgeting, grant applications and staff alignment. Having an urban forest management plan is actually a first step in eligibility for a lot of grants. So this would make a big difference in its kind of own ability to support itself. And generally, adoption shows a commitment to a greener and healthier future for community members. And then just one last thing I wanted to mention really quickly is there's often kind of dialogue around, do we have development or do we have tree preservation? And both are possible. There's a great example of a neighborhood in Seattle called Bryant Heights where the city worked directly with a developer and an architecture firm to ensure that they preserved large trees while also increasing housing. This area previously had four housing units on it. Now it has, I think, 50. And you can see in the top left there, they preserved an entire wall of very large trees. The townhouse on the right has a massive maple in front of it. And then they even added new trees that are going to grow quite large. So those two little conifers in the right, that picture's from 2018, those trees are about twice as tall now. So there really is a lot of opportunity. It's just a matter of being committed to it and making the effort to find these developers who are interested in these kinds of things and bring them in on the ground level. And so that's where I'm really excited. And so that is my presentation for the evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Very good. Thank you, Patrick. Do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, oh, sorry, Councilmember Son.
I have several because I'm trying to get aligned here. So you just brought up a question. With that development there, is that something that we can do? Because the land right now, people are wondering, well, why don't you develop in Mount Lake Terrace? Well, the land is extremely valuable and our location, people don't want to move because they're in a good location. We've kind of gone around for this on years and years, but the new developers that are coming in, like the apartment buildings or the car wash on 44th, they wipe it clean. It's completely clean. And if you could come back into the park and rec board and explain to us maybe about our building codes and what we do and what we would need to have something like that, that would be beneficial to us as well because a lot of these, you can, you know, plant trees somewhere else, and I don't know if we have inventories of that, but a lot of it is dependent on the city putting nice trees up front and taking care of the trees on the sidewalks and making sure they're in the right vault and they don't ruin the street or the sidewalk and blah, blah, blah. And you already know all that, but it would be nice to go back over that again. So I was looking at the report and it said 119,000, and you said it would pay for itself in the future. But we're not asking for any money, but there was $119,000 from the Department of Natural Resources. But what confuses me a little bit, and maybe you can help me here, is the estimated cost. And there's options one, two and three. And four, I don't really understand, and I know you have to kind of go up to the top and it says the costs and then pros and cons. And option number one is it has community outreach and add tree-related tasks and add minimum amount to tree removal on call for 2025 only. So does that mean we're already doing it for $10,000 and the city allows the city? The pro is the city, allow the city to remove hazard trees ID'd in street inventory because I know we've been removing trees. Or, and the con is does not build the annual tree removal program or cover critical pruning. And then it goes down into two, but number four, it says tree removal permits on private property, $190,000. And the pro, would city to accurately track tree removal? Can you kind of explain that?
Absolutely. Jennifer, can I get some help pulling up that document? So yes, one, one thing to highlight is we, so we're not actually asking for any of that funding tonight. funding tonight. So I included that document, it's the like four options one that I had. So I included that document because Laura had come before you all, before she left with four options that were kind of estimated costs for U F M P, thank you very much, implementation before the full plan was completely written. So these were estimated costs and I just wanted to bring them back up if there was curiosity in that regard. But as we all know, the economic conditions have changed a lot in the last several months. And so when we, I decided that we didn't want to ask for any funding right now because I want to make sure that the numbers that I present you with, when we actually ask for funding are the most up-to-date that they could possibly be. So I included this in the packet to say, these are some baselines that we had previously and I would like to use the same layout as options for the council to choose from when we do come back for funding. So the option one would be to add tree-related tasks to my responsibility, to the engineering technicians' responsibilities, communications manager and to the GIS specialist workloads, but with no additional funding. So that's kind of what's already happening because I'm presenting the urban forest management plan tonight. And so one of the benefits of that is that we would be able to manage some of these components, right? It is work we can already do, but it doesn't add any additional tree expertise beyond what myself and those other staffers have. It also means that we're stretched thinner because we're trying to do more things. And then we wouldn't be able to get to the majority of the things in the U F M P. So then when we, and then, but then one of the costs, some of the costs that that option one is suggesting would be $20,000 for community outreach, to work with nonprofits or consultants through a contract, and then to add a minimal amount of tree removal on-call work for $10,000. We're not currently doing that. We do respond to hazard trees, which could add up to costs like that. But we're not looking to expand that right now. These were just potential proposals. And I think Laura brought this before council in January, maybe? So that was considering 2025 if adoption had happened earlier. So if we were to decide on option two, it would include all of the things from option one plus those additional options in there. So you can see there's subtotals and running totals in there. And so when we, when I do come back for a budget amendment, it will be in a similar format, but we'll have updated numbers to highlight that. Does that help, Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. Say what Laura said, sometimes we have to be reminded and it's, sometimes we don't have those notes in front of us, so I don't remember all of this. But what I'm understanding tonight, just based on this, is we're going to have a public hearing and then vote on the ordinance. So the ordinance is coming to us without a budget. And so how do, how do we make this work then? Because if we want to see it succeed, well, I, you know, we haven't voted on it, so I'll just stop for myself. I'd like to see it succeed, but if there's no budget behind it, how do we carry out and ensure this plan works?
Yeah, so we have this baseline here, at least as an overall outline. And the intention is to use the stormwater fund for this in any regard. But I also wanted to be able to look at, we already, the intent was if we already have an urban forest management plan, then we can apply for some of those grants to fund some of these things. And so when we're able to ask for a specific budget, we can also highlight, this is an area where we'll be going after grant funding so that we can have kind of an overall, a better picture of what it would actually cost the city rather than kind of trying to make our best guess based on older information. So what I would say is for what I'm asking council to do tonight is to kind of highlight that the plan that is laid out in the urban forest management plan right now is the path forward that we want to try to achieve and then know that we will have four budgetary options the next time I come to implement those different components and that there'll be different scales for each different part of the plan. So essentially, tonight you're saying, I believe in the plan and I want to take the opportunity to consider the cost to implement it and then decide on which of those cost structures we want to highlight. So does that help?
And you're saying the money is there?
Yeah, I'm confident in the stormwater fund. I think there's a lot of opportunity for grant funding through the urban and community forestry program. And we know that trees are highly tied to the capacity to reduce impacts on stormwater. Other municipalities throughout the country are utilizing stormwater funds and the stormwater utility fund is a robust utility fund. So I think there is plenty of opportunity to manage these practices. I think probably a middle ground approach will be one of the, would be my recommendation. We, you know, we are intending to, the most expensive thing in here would to be to do a full tree permit because it would require a lot more staff time. But we're starting with those kind of technical assistance and educational components. And so we don't necessarily need that right away, but I want to be clear about what kinds of material we would need for full, complete implementation and what potential opportunities that council and the community are looking for.
And so when you come back to us, you will bring like a project list of all the other storm projects. I know we redid something on 66. We did, redid a retention pond and Laura would use to go through all the list of how much different things cost and she had kind of a, so that would really help us to also to make sure we prioritize and make sure that we can carry out some of this work that's being put into place.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you. That's a great note.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any other, Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Question for clarification that probably tags on with Councilmember Sonmore. So we're going to vote on this plan, but we're not voting on the budgetary items.
Correct.
Okay. Now, besides the budgetary items such as option four, it says tree removal permits on private property. So we're not voting on that and we're not voting on the budget.
No, that's correct.
Okay, so those kind of things would come back to council and we'd have discussion on it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, because, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Any other questions for Patrick before we move into the public hearing? Seeing none, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. We have a motion to open the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. We have a motion, a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? All right, we, the public hearing is now open. Jennifer, do we have anybody signed up for the public hearing?
Yes. Michael Ness, you'll have five minutes at the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Trees are, and trees in our urban canopy are an important part of Mount Lake Terrace and they provide more benefits to the city than I thought they had before I read this well-laid out plan. I'm happy to see that we're considering a long-term plan with clear aspirations for our city and that it takes into account the effects of a changing climate. As a member of a city volunteer group, I enjoy the opportunity to care for and plant new trees and I'm excited to see that we'll be planting more hopefully in the future. And I just wanted to thank all of those who worked on putting together such a thorough plan and for the council for considering it tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any others signed up for?
No more have signed up.
If nobody else wishes to testify for public hearing, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm assuming that was an aye for, for closing public hearing. All right, then the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion to adopt the urban forest management plan as presented?
I move to, sorry, move the, I know we've got notes over here. We weren't sure what exactly how to say the motion, the ordinance for the urban forest management plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. We have a motion, a second to adopt the urban forest management plan. Before, before voting, do we have any discussion? Councilmember Woodard?
Yes, I just actually just want to make a comment in case we just make the decision and move forward. I just wanted to pause, in particular as a former chair of RPAC and just say how much, what a wonderful example of how our commissions work. That's how I want to say that. And so I just wanted to make, we went on record in saying, thank you so much because this really was community-driven. Then it was community technically funded, reached out for the funding at least, and then it's carried its way all the way through. And just what a wonderful opportunity we all have. That said, I also wanted to just acknowledge a couple of quick things before we vote. And this is for our new people. Our former amazing kin would always point out that Mount Lake Terrace is the only part of the I-5 that still has the evergreens on both sides. I don't know if that should be for our branding people or for the tree canopy, but I do think that that's a point of pride, that I don't know how you reflect that in this canopy, but I would love that story to be attached to this because we are doing amazing work across the four, but people pass through us and, you know, get that beautiful glimpse immediately just by passing by on the freeway. We've been talking about the life, the life, the life, the life that it gives, it gives, it gives, but I also wanted to give a shout out to the dead trees, which is just to remind us, I didn't know there was any space in here for that, but if you came by my house, you know that we have a, basically you would have called it a snag tree, now it's called a wildlife tree. I've had so, my family have had so many birds burrow into this to create life, the fungus that is growing on this thing. I mean, it's been such a wonderful educational tool. People walk by, pause, have conversations over the tree. I just kind of wanted to put that back out there as well, as much as we're talking about the livelihood, the canopies and all that, that those dead trees still have a role. So to our council's point, don't just clear-cut. There's a lot of the ecosystem that still thrives on the nursing logs. Yeah, thank you, I'll just stop there. And then the last one was really, just wanted to highlight, mostly it was in the photos, but I didn't want this to go unnoticed as well, which is the educational piece of that. I really love the photos of the kids, but just reminding us that that's also a thousand year legacy, but if we do this early and often enough, the kids themselves grow up with this and hopefully that generation keeps moving and recycling as well because we won't be here for the thousand years, but we would love for these trees to be here for that amount of time. So just wonderful work. Thank you all for the amount of hours you put in for this. And again, I feel like this started after my time on RPAC, which is just to say, what an amazing genesis to creation to policy. So again, thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodard, you just reminded me of something. When Mount Lake Terrace was founded, they did clear-cut everything. And it reminds me of what you talked about in our report about how long trees live. And I think that would be, I hope we could put something that in our newsletter if we want to share, you know, what Steve just said about dead trees and about how long trees live, because that was eye-opening to me when you were talking about that because I was thinking, all those evergreens behind my house are all going to die soon and I had no idea that they lived that long. So that was pretty interesting takeaway tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Patrick, for being here and for the presentation again. And I would just echo what my colleagues have already said. Thank you. Thank you to everybody who's been involved in this process throughout. I'm just, I'm proud. I'm incredibly proud of our city. I know we are excited about growth. We know that growth is important in terms of giving more folks opportunity to locate and also stay in our community. And trees, to your point, are a really important part of what makes our community our community, right? And what people love about our community, along with all of the really important environmental and health aspects that you spoke to. So I just, I, I think if you fail to plan, you know, then things don't happen the way that you want them to. And I think particularly around trees, having a written plan is an incredibly important part of reaching the vision that we want for our community. So just thank you for all of the work. I'm excited to put it into place and appreciate you coming here tonight to share again.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Any other comments? I will close out then with, by saying, absolutely. This is, you all know that I am, have always been very pro-growth, pro-development and it's important for us to continue increasing housing opportunities. But I've also been a long advocate of balancing that with quality of life. And the way that we grow a strong communities by ensuring we preserve the things that we love about it and our parks, recreation and trees and urban forests here that we have and take pride over here in Mount Lake Terrace is important to preserve. And this provides a great path forward to help us. I really want to shout out to Audrey, who's been such a tremendous help in getting this off the ground. Laura, our former stormwater manager, for, for helping and working with Audrey and the community and making it happen and bringing it to this point, and Patrick for taking over and bringing it to us tonight and going to continue implementing it and look forward to working with, with you and the council to figure out how, how we're going to be able to implement this program. So thank you all. Great work. We're looking forward to having this get off the ground. With that, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I need to pause a moment longer. I'm assuming that mayor, that that was an aye in favor. And so
Yes, it was.
Very good. It's a unanimous approval and nobody opposed. We are moving forward with the urban forest management plan. Congratulations and thank you very much for all of the individual.
Thank you all.
Okay, with that, we are moving on to the discussion and presentation on the public safety costs with our city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. City council asked for a breakdown of public safety costs. As many of you know, it is one of the fastest rising costs that we have as part of the city, although not the only one for sure. Wanted to point out a couple of things. You have the memo in front of you, but I'll just highlight a couple of the figures that are in there. So for 2025, we have, excuse me, I got two numbers mixed up there. A little over $21 million in the general fund budgeted. Our costs, as I'll mention again when I get down to the bottom of the presentation, are a little over $9 million for public safety. That is 42.7% of the general fund budget goes to public safety and that's by no means unusual. Many cities spend between 40 and 50% of their general fund budget on public safety issues. So a few things, the biggest driver, of course, is salaries and benefits for our police officers and for the personnel that work in the police department that are non-sworn, such as animal control, all of our team members that work in public records. Very important, we get a lot of public records requests in the police department, much more than we do in the regular part of city government. Much of that is driven by insurance companies looking for police reports as part of their claims process. So you get quite, quite a bit of that. When we implemented the body worn camera systems, we have a tremendous volume of requests for video. Each one of those videos has to be redacted frame by frame before they can be sent out, which significant amount of cost, staff time to do that. Few other things, we broke down in your memo, the indirect costs, as we call them. Those are for things like fleet repairs and maintenance, but also our fleet program where we save money for when the cars need to be replaced on a set schedule for police cars. We have our insurance costs that are broken out just for our police department, things like snowcom fees for 911, property maintenance, of course, and then all the other things, computer programs, training, translator fees. So those indirect costs total about 1.7 million, a little over 1.7 million. A couple of the other elements, one, our current prosecutor is Zachar. A couple of the other elements, one, our current prosecutor is Zachar Stock and Crips, and we have a current contract with them that pays $12,500 a month or $150,000 annually. That contract is up at the end of this year, and we are doing a request for proposal process. I would expect, and I have anecdotal research to suggest that that cost will be over $200,000 in the next contract per year. And the reason for that, well, among many reasons, just rising cost of living for everybody. But in our region, the Snohomish County prosecutors had a starting salary in 2023, I believe, of $72,000. That's somebody right out of law school, has zero experience. In 2024, that went up to just slightly under $89,000 a year. And in 2025, January of this year, it increased to 92,000. So salaries for prosecutors at the county level went up $20,000 in two years. And in order to attract qualified personnel, people that provide our prosecution services have to mirror, if not match, those rates. So we have that component of it. Another is South District Court, which we pay to handle our court cases. We have filing fees for things like traffic tickets and criminal infractions and those types of things. The numbers are there before you in the memo. But one of the efficiencies that we've identified and we've already started working on is a online system in order to pay traffic tickets or non-criminal infractions. When we send tickets to the court, after a certain number of days, we have to pay the court a fee to handle that ticket. If the tickets are paid before we send them to court, then obviously we don't have to pay, and the ticket costs less. But it's difficult for folks to pay here because the only way you can do it is if you come in, come into the police department and pay it, or drop it off in the drop box that's right outside the police department. So if we institute an online system, which we are working on with our current utility billing vendor, so it'd be the same vendor, so we wouldn't have a different vendor to tie into our ERP systems, we think we can increase collection of those quite a bit and would be able to save significantly on those filing costs with the court. So we're looking into that already. We've talked a lot about public defense over the last year with the recent Supreme Court decision to reduce caseload standards for public defenders and how much the costs were going to rise for that, in that particular area. The Feldman and Lee is our contract public defender. We have a contract with them that also ends at the end of this year. That process is also going out for a request for proposal. But as you'll recall, in 2024, I believe, we paid about $18,000 a month for public defense services. In 2025, that went up to $26,500 per month. I would expect with the new caseload standards, because that $26,500 did not include the Supreme Court's decision on public defense caseload standards. So I would expect in, for our next contract, when we get responses to the request for proposal that we're sending out, that we are likely to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000 to $40,000 per month for public defense. That's a significant increase. That's doubling, basically, from what we paid in 2024. Last component I wanted to talk about and highlight here is the jail component. And a one-bed in jail per night and roughly similar between the new Linwood facility that recently opened up and the County Everett facility is over $200 a night for, to put somebody in jail. You also have booking fees, you have video arraignment fees and everything else that goes along with that. Those are also, I included the expected increase in the memo here, going up for 2026 and 2027. That's already been decided by the county and sent to us about what it would cost to house folks there. And we expect the Linwood jail to be similar. So all those costs together, like I said, in 2024 totaled a little over $9 million, and it's only going to continue to rise. As an example, I think it's in this memo, but the fees for snowcom, our 911 system, are also going up relatively significantly. So each component of this, this public safety cost is going up. And it's, as I mentioned at the start, it's not limited to public safety. Our medical insurance premiums, for instance, are expected to rise 15% next year. And that's replicated across all sectors. Our premiums for liability insurance will go up, and they've almost doubled in five years. So it's certainly a different environment than it was five years ago. But public safety is the biggest component of every city's general fund budget. So I wanted to share these numbers with you and happy to welcome a discussion, answer any questions if I can.
Sorry.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm sorry, I had one note here that I wanted to, I really wanted to make a point of. In 2010, we had 32 sworn officers and a deputy chief and a four public records specialists. Today, we have 28 officers, so four less than we had 15 years ago. We also no longer have a deputy chief position, and we don't, we only have three record specialists in the police department. So that, the department's running incredibly lean already, and that's as population continues to grow throughout the city over the last 15 years. So a reduction in personnel and an increased demand. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. All right, any comments and questions, or questions for the city manager, Councilmember Sonmore?
I know you have some as well, so I won't talk too much. But thank you for this report. It shows us how much we are spending. And first thing, of course, we want to say, if we can reduce crime, we would have more money for our general budget to spend on other things. And that's why I'm so cautious of not spending things like $68,000 on a branding when we know these costs are going up, right? So they're not coming down. It's a choice that we have 28 officers over when we had 32 officers. And we, I guess, when I was thinking of this report, I was thinking of how much the police costs, what raise we have given them in the last couple of years and how much that's cost the city. And then looking at how much the state is putting in for public safety and then, you know, dividing it up by residents so they can see how much fire and public safety is costing them and what we're doing to reduce the crime. And if I had a magic ball and I had all the opinions in the world, I still won't be able to reduce crime. What the interesting thing would be too was to look at somebody when they're arrested. So as a law and justice major, I guess this stuff always fascinates me. When you arrest somebody, you know, how much time does it take that officer and their salary? How much jail time? Then we pay for their medical when they're in jail. Then we pay for their attorney cost, depending on if they have the money or not, and the cost to them, the victims. And I'm assuming it would be staggering. And it's just something that I'm glad we have a baseline to look at this, but we know the costs aren't coming down. We know the state's trying to do things to stop crime, but it's something that is going to extremely impact our budget from here on out, and it's not going down. And it's just something that we have to be aware of when we're looking at costs coming to the city. We already know that we're going to be in a deficit already. And the one thing that I don't want to lose is police officers in our city and have it go down. We've had to do that before, and it's something that we try and pride ourselves in for every thousand neighbors. We have so many, so much of a dedicated officer looking at keeping rates of staff. But it's staggering. And so I'm going to let you talk about all those items that you want to talk about. Those are just my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any further comments or questions, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, city manager. Appreciate the data. I always, I'm somebody who likes more information, and this, I think, put together very clearly a better understanding, at least for me, of what our costs are. I appreciate, I will say, and I talk about this, I think, with reports often, I appreciate that context of where we were in 2010 versus now, right? Because I think that's part of the story that often isn't told in a single snapshot of where we are. I think one of the things that would be interesting for me to understand is recognize we have less staff than we did in 2010. I know we've made a lot of investments in technology over the recent years in terms of trying to find efficiencies as staff haven't kept up, at least with our population growth. And I think that is true in the police department as well as throughout city staff. So I guess that I'd be curious to know what we were spending on other incidentals, like non-staff costs in 2010 versus now. I think that would be an interesting thing to see whether, like, we've, you know, taken those investments that we were making in staff and have invested them in other tools to help the staff that we have be more efficient, or if we're just spending less money overall. So that's something I'd be curious to understand better. I will name, as somebody who's worked a lot of my career in HR and, you know, working on compensation, housing is a big part of the drive. When we're hearing these numbers, a lot of them are because staff costs have increased. Many staff costs have increased because that is what businesses have to do to recruit and retain employees. So, and we talk about housing a lot, but the cost of housing is a huge driver for a lot of the cost increases that we are seeing across the board. And it is why, at least for me, it is a serious issue that we have to address here in our community, but why it is a serious issue across the region that we should be working on collectively and comprehensively. I'd be curious, and again, I think going back to technology, you mentioned specifically, Jeff, some of the redaction challenges as we utilize more technology. I'm curious if there are technology solutions, at least for like first passes around redacting video and other documents that we are using, or maybe that we can consider using in the future to help support staff in some of that work.
So I think a couple of points. First, I can go back to the 2010 budget and compare the percent of the general fund that was spent on public safety at the time. I think that'd give us a pretty good rule of thumb, so I can get that information to you. As far as things like technology and other efficiencies, one of the big reasons why we're able to operate with fewer officers, but this just came online, is the fact that when they transporting somebody to jail, now they no longer have to go all the way to Everett. You know, at 4:00 in the afternoon on a Friday, you're gone off the street for three or four hours at that point. Now we can go to Linwood's 10 minutes away. So there's efficiencies like that that help. As far as tools for redaction, I don't know. I'll have to look at the Public Records Act. I know that we want to be very careful about that. I'm not sure if it would save any time because a human has to go back through and look at all that stuff anyway, but we can take a look.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I would just continue to be curious about where there are opportunities for efficiencies. And I know staff has been working hard on that, and I appreciate the, you know, consistent focus there as well as, I think, even more focus in recent times as we have continued to look for solutions, recognizing our budget. I guess maybe one more ask, well, maybe two questions. One, I think one of the things that I would be interested in, you know, so we talk about, you know, public safety, and I will say this is public safety in terms of law enforcement and court costs and jail costs. You know, I think that is a piece of public safety and not all of public safety. I think that's important to name. But I think actually building on maybe what part of what Council Sonmore was saying, you know, a lot of this is reacting to crime. Ideally, we would try to prevent crime. And there is a preventative nature to some of this work and to having a presence of, you know, police in our community, et cetera. But I guess what we haven't talked about, at least in the time that I've been on council, which is nearing six years, I think, is talking about proactive investments that reduce crime. And so I think it's really interesting where we are. But I think particularly, as we know, that these are costs that are increasing exponentially and much higher than our revenue is increasing, much faster than the rate of inflation. I would be really curious to know what investments we could be making now to help reduce the need for at least, you know, increased services in the future, or at least to slow down the increase in needs in some of these spaces. So I think that's something that would be a worthwhile conversation for us as a council to have, is to better understand what are the drivers of crime in our community? And what does the data say in terms of what are investments or things that we could be doing as a city to reduce those crimes? So I guess that would be an ask for staff that I would love to get on an agenda at some point.
Yeah, so I didn't include the statistic in here because I couldn't find a citation for it. But anecdotally, in city manager conference, most recently, what, a month ago in Walla Walla, the statistic was shared that 70% of criminal defendants require public defense. That's an interesting data point to me, only because if that's true, and like I said, I can't, I can't verify that, at least I haven't been able to yet. If that's true, I think it's pretty clear how you address these crimes, right? I think you invest in early childhood education. I think you make sure that people are well-equipped to be productive members of society rather than having to resort to this. Because I don't think very many people want to do that, right? A lot of them are forced into it by circumstance. You change the circumstance and you can fix the problem, then we don't have to pay $200 a night, right? And it's generating value for the community and for themselves. But there hasn't been political will nationally, statewide, or locally to do that. So, you know, just pointing that out, I think a lot of the factors that we can invest in are human services, which is something that we don't have, we don't have a human services department, some cities do. And we can certainly show you what that might look like, but also what it would cost. I mean, there's investment there too. And while you're waiting for that investment to pay off, you're paying both. So you're talking about, you know, substantially increasing costs. But, I mean, we'd be happy to put something together like that for you.
I mean, I think it's a worthwhile thing, at least for our community, to understand, right? I think to your point, I think it is a challenge sometimes to get from where you are to where you want to go. And it's that like messy middle of making any sort of change. But if we never do that, if we don't even have the conversation about it, then I don't think we're allowing ourselves as a community to at least consider what the future looks like. And the future doesn't look very good if we, the costs for public safety in this specific space continue to go up as they're going up, because it is going to eat up more and more of our budget. And our budget is incredibly lean anyway. I think anybody who hasn't been paying attention to our budget in a, you know, very focused way might not understand how year after year, we've had city staff that have continued to try to maintain the services that we do provide with less revenue because revenue hasn't kept up in with the costs of providing the services that we do already. So it's just going to, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to do less, right? Especially as these costs continue to rise. And I hear Councilmember Sonmore's concerns. And I also don't want to see us like cut off our nose despite our face and cut things that ultimately are long-term good investments and pass the cost on to future generations. Because I think that is part of the reason that we are where we are, is that for far too long, because solutions were hard, they weren't always undertaken. And that has left, I think, every subsequent generation with harder and harder decisions about how to make numbers work and oftentimes getting less services, less infrastructure, less resources as a result. And so I would, I would love to better understand what that looks like for our community. And I guess maybe I just, I would love a little hope, Jeff. Like, this is a very sobering, you know, document, and I think that is good, and I think it's important and it's real, right? But I guess in terms of, because I know city staff has been looking at these things, are there communities that have found, you know, ways to help at least rein in some of the costs? Or are there things that we have found that we're excited to continue to look into that maybe, you know, just, I mean, shed a little bit of hope on, at least in some places, finding some efficiencies, cost savings, et cetera?
Yeah, so that's exactly what our Financial Sustainability Task Force is tasked with. Not only finding efficiencies and making sure, you know, there's things that we may have overlooked. I am fond of saying, well, not fond, but I say often that I've been in city government for 25 years. And I don't look at things the same way that other people do outside of the city government perspective. So very reasonable to think that there may be something that we've overlooked that we use outside perspective for. Part of the reason for that, for the task Part of, part of the reason for that, for the task force is to share those perspectives with us. The other part of that is making sure that we are investing in the things that people value. So there may very well be things that we do that, you know, people are like, we don't need that. Why are we spending money on it? So we need to know what those things are so that we can prioritize the dollars we do have.
Thank you.
Yeah, people have been very successful with the task forces, similar to the one that we're running across the state, including some of our neighbors in Kenmore and one city in Washington won a national award for theirs. Not that I'm mentioning that for any particular reason.
Well, I am grateful to the task force and excited to, yeah, see, see their findings once they get through their process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Sonmore.
I was just going to do a follow-up. I used to have a professor who was an attorney and he'd always say, students, all about economics. It's all about, and I'll never forget him saying that, and it's how much people, how much more can we spend? It's just like the pool. How much do we want our residents to spend on a new pool? How much more can we spend on criminal justice? And it's really hard. That's why I wanted to know what the state was spending and it's billions of dollars. But it comes down to, you know, early childhood education. Is that the city's responsibility? Is that school district's responsibility? I hear the gentleman giving us public comments about COVID and I'm thinking, we can't give money to the school and, you know, we can buy masks, but how do we force people? You know, so they all have tentacles and I look at the state budget and we're spending the most we ever have in homelessness. And I remember going to my first homelessness conference and somebody told me, the speaker said, you know, there's just some people who don't want housing. And I was appalled and shocked and how could you ever say that? And now the more I learn, I understand there's different types of homeless people out there and non-housed for many different reasons. So how do you solve this one and this one and this one and childcare and this? And then we look at juvenile crimes happening and what the judges are doing. And it's just, it's a big ball. And that's why I think Brian and I are so interested in this is where do you just grasp one area and maybe help that the city has tentacles that we can help with, like you were saying, Erin? Or how do we reduce crime because we've noticed it in this area? I think that's a great idea to maybe look at areas that have the most crime in our city and maybe that's one of the places we start because it's, to me, it's so overwhelming to look at the crime going on. And we used to be told that it was all about opportunity and it was, why do criminals reoffend? And we were always told because they never think they're going to get caught, you know? And so you keep on, but then you see criminals out there that have 32 arrests and, and, but the thing is, is what we were always told is you put them in jail, they're always going to get out, right? And so how do you make sure they don't reoffend and what do they do after they get out of jail? And then how do they have any money when they get out of jail and who's going to hire them? And so it's one of those things that is all-consuming, but I think maybe we got one area and start there and, and we've got some basic numbers, but it's an interesting topic to talk about.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Any others before I launch into my?
Yeah, sorry.
No, this, yeah, I'm encouraging you to speak now. All right. No, thank you.
Can you extend the meeting?
Yeah, no, thank you. And Jeff, thank you for bringing this to us. We've been very concerned about this, you know, for the last, you know, year or two, I guess we've been hearing about the public defense costs going up and then realizing that we really haven't had, spent much time really understanding the criminal justice aspect. I mean, we get the police reports all the time and we appreciate all the work that our police do in providing, ensuring public safety in our community. But we have little, as a council, little understanding other than passing a budget every year to be able to fund these different other aspects, particularly the courts and the jails and the prosecutors and the public defenders and understanding how all of those key pieces are adding up. And right now, costs are skyrocketing in those areas and understanding, you know, what, what aspects of those can we, do we have control over? How can we help address some of those different key pieces, particularly, you know, the, I guess there's different aspects there and I really appreciate the conversation that we've had as far as trying to identify, you know, what areas can we have influence over here? My biggest concern is that based on the cost skyrocketing, is that going to put us in a position of having to consider what we enforce and what we just let go? You know, what, what laws do we have in place? Are we not going to be able to enforce because we don't have, we aren't able to cover the costs of it? And so that's coming if we don't really get a handle on some of these things. And so that's where I think, you know, there's, you know, this is the first step in understanding that and getting the breakdown and the overview. And the next step is looking at, for instance, you know, when it comes to the courts, prosecutors, public defense and jails, I think there's real opportunity for us to be looking and working together with our neighbors. We've started that discussion in our regional collaboration meetings and trying to figure out, you know, are, I mean, is the South, for instance, for us, is the South Snohomish County District Court the best court for us? Or can we, do we have the ability to work together and utilize the Lynnwood Courts or the Edmonds Courts and the system that they have in place? Can we be adjoining forces and when we go off with our RFPs for things like the prosecutors and the public defense, are there opportunities for us to do so with other jurisdictions to be able to help reduce, you know, find efficiencies, I guess, in that, in the numbers? But that requires us to all be utilizing the same court system, right? Because it doesn't make sense for our prosecutor, to have a prosecutor, the same prosecutor going to one court to do, you know, to do, do their job and then at the same time having to go to a different court across town. So there's just, there's, there's things and opportunities, potential opportunities for us to be able to do some regional sharing and working together. And so looking at it from that aspect, another, another piece of it is the diversion programs, understanding what, different courts offer different diversion programs. And so getting an understanding of which court, you know, what kind of diversion programs are out there and available and, and how can we tap into some of that to be able to reduce some costs? You know, and some courts maybe offer and others don't. And maybe we need to look at using a different court for a different type of diversion program. So there's some of the other things I think we need to have a discussion about and look in, look into. The proactive measures, I think, is key. I mean, but also law enforcement. I mean, a big, you know, we remember Snohomish County City's dinner we had a little while back, talking about the retail crime. And our employees at, at retail shops are instructed to be cautious about how you interact with criminal doing their job or, you know, doing their job, doing their, doing what they do, right? And, and so there's, and then, and then our police go out and arrest, arrest folks, but we don't have enough prosecutors to prosecute the crimes. And so then, you know, so another part of it is ensuring we have the prosecutors in place that not only, you know, our level, I guess that's another piece of the conversation that we need to have is, you know, what do, the cities and municipal governments have a certain level of crimes that we prosecute and then the county has a different level, the higher, you know, the, the crime, right? So, but our county doesn't have the resources to be able to have sufficient prosecutors in place to be able to enforce the law. And so, and make sure that we prosecute the criminals and then lock them up. And so there's all these different aspects that we need to be aware of and understanding what do we need to do to ensure the law enforcement side of it? But then there's also the prevention side of it that we need to focus on. That's an area that, another area that we need to take a look at. And I think we've got a lot of great, starting a lot of great programs with the resources that we do have, things like the social worker embedded in, in our police, looking at, and we should, we should have, by the way, a presentation from Snohomish County Fire sometime about the, the regional program, the crisis response program that they have in place and what we're expanding. Another collaboration that we've been working with the South County Cities is crisis, the Racer Program, the Rapid Crisis Response Program. And so that's another area of when, when people are in crisis, we know that's when they also act out in ways that is not beneficial to society. And so finding ways to respond to those, respond to those folks that are in crisis at the time that they are in crisis in a way to find, divert, provide the services that they need at the time that they need them. And it's, that's far beyond just healthcare, right? I mean, that is mental health and, and mental health is a huge driver of crime. So that's another aspect that we need to look into is, and we should have a presentation so that our community is aware of the resources that are available and how we're expanding those resources, working together with our South County Fire and our other jurisdictions. So those are, and then there's other programs. We used to have the Neutral Zone and we've talked a little bit about the Neutral Zone serving our youth and providing them with something to do, something positive to do to keep them away from getting in trouble. Another aspect is, is just, and this is a whole nother discussion that's outside the, certainly outside of the realm of, of council, but our family units, supporting our family units and ensuring that our family units have the ability to raise our children in a positive way and provide the guidance that they need to keep them out of trouble in the first place and get them into a positive direction, sending the kids in the positive direction. So that's, that, part of that is working together with our families, supporting them. Part of it is the faith community. Part of it is having the services available that through, through local government and that we need to be able to respond. I could go on and I don't want to extend the meeting to be able to do that. But I guess those are the different things that I'd really like to have more conversation about and help us understand what we can be doing at the city level to be able to help proactively prevent crime while also enforcing it and, and having the tools in place to enforce the crime when it does happen and make sure that we're getting the criminals off the streets. So I will rest there and look forward to further discussion, but appreciate this coming forward for us to start understanding and getting a better idea of what we can do to address these, these issues. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Page.
Yeah, thanks. I have a question. The thing that's been like bugging me since this report is that 70% indigent number. And I think that from, and what's, what's rolling through my mind is what does that number look like for Mount Lake terrorists? You know, is it 70%? Is it 50%? Is it 80%? And more importantly, what is that age bracket that's falling into that indigent? Because as I sit here, I think about that age group between 13 and 25. We know that, you know, the youth are getting in trouble at an exponentially rate that's just going out the window in Snohomish County. And a, and a youth, a juvenile can't even plead guilty unless they have an attorney present. No judge will let them do that. So that's an automatic, you know, public defender right from the get-go. All right? So that's the cost, you know, and that's where it starts. And then it, that, that individual just keeps circulating until they reach some point. So I would just like to know, you know, from where we are, like we talked about that one piece, or where could we, you know, grab something? That number right there, because that's a big cost, you know, that, that, that whole, and, and where is that number for us and what is that age group for us? Because then I think that helps us begin to look to, well, what can we as a council drive? As you were talking, I'm sitting here thinking about what both of you said about some of the, you know, how do we help get in front of some of this stuff? And I hear all the time, it starts with affordable housing, you know? If a person doesn't have affordable housing for their family, and I knew, I know I grew, grew up in the projects for a little while, then things start to spiral because they can't help it. And I think that, you know, with our comp plan and what we're trying to do with affordable housing, maybe that's a start. But I think that if we can just find that, that, that one piece, because I don't know how much else you can do right now, you know, because we're just seeing this report, but that jumps out at me, that, that indigent number. And I can guarantee you that juveniles to 25, 26, they are indigent, period. Because they're not working, you know?
Yeah, that, that number jumped out to me too, which is why I was trying to find the citation for it. And I'll keep looking. I mean, I know it's out there. It was shared at a professional conference. It's not going to be made up. So we can find that. We're also talking, you know, about affordable housing. I know that it's a priority for council and I have some ideas around that, that we may be able to work into, work into, you know, what we're looking at attracting here. They're not fully fleshed out, but I'll share those with you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Page. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Just a couple of thoughts sparked by the continuing conversations. So I appreciate hearing everybody's input and thoughts. One, and I think Mayor Protam, you may have been there during this conversation too, but I don't think it was explicit, at least tonight. I think in addition to looking at other options for court services, I know there was a willingness when South County Court was at our Snohomish County Cities and Towns Meeting here at some point in the last six months, we were chatting with, with one of the judges and there was definitely interest and willingness at developing a community court in South County. That is, to your point, something that doesn't exist currently, but I guess in addition to looking at other court systems, I think looking at if there's options to have the court system that we currently utilize work better for both folks who are navigating the criminal justice system as well as for us as a city in terms of costs and hopefully reducing recidivism. I think that would be a really interesting thing and worthwhile thing to look into. And there was lots of interest and willingness, I think, both from the folks at the court as well as with other neighboring jurisdictions that utilize their services. And then the other thing I would add that's just as interesting to me is I have a freshman at Mount Lake Terrace High School this year, so I'm going to all the, the high school things. And I know I've talked a lot about youth, supporting youth and I think to Councilmember Page's point, you know, how do we keep people from getting into those situations to begin with? Because oftentimes, you know, one mistake turns into multiple mistakes. I will say, what I've learned is our local high school is doing a really good job. They have the highest graduation rate in the entire district and by far, so they're at like 93%, I think is their graduation rate, which is much higher than the, the state average and is much higher than the other high schools in the district. So I think there's opportunity there to maybe understand, you know, the DEIC who always does such a great job of connecting with folks, had, they have a new principal this year. He came and joined them last night. And so I think just finding out like what they're doing and what's working well that maybe we can, you know, be supportive of. And then, you know, I think it'd be interesting to get their input about like for those 5% that aren't graduating, right? Or that are running into challenges, like where, where is the gap that actually needs to be filled from a city perspective if they're handling a lot of it really well? So I guess that's just an initial data point that I didn't know before that I thought was interesting. But I think there's good opportunity and willingness there to engage as we continue to build community connection through a lot of the work that our DEIC is doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray. Any further discussion? I guess I will highlight following off of that. You know, one of the things that, you know, we talk about the schools and they're responsible for a certain aspect and we have no authority and ability to influence that and they have no authority and ability to influence city government. But we can work together. And one of the things, the schools do have a very good handle on who, you know, their, their students are that are in need. And so if we can share that information and we can understand who those folks are and who those residents are and who those families are, and then be able to work with them through our programs to connect them with the services that they are in need of. I think that would be another good tool that we can do a better job of, of serving our residents and helping them out in finding ways to navigate the, the challenges that they're facing at home. So thank you for reminding me of that. And thank you for the discussion on this. I think this is a critically important I think this is a critically important topic that we need to consider and be aware of and understand how we can influence it moving forward and, and understanding the costs involved and how it's impacting our overall budget. So appreciate everybody's discussion. Jeff, appreciate you bringing this forward and, and look forward to continued discussion on this item, these items in the future. Thank you. All right, moving on, we are now at the city manager's board. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Couple of things to mention tonight. First, we have the generators installed, the shared generator for the fire department and the police department. South County paid for half of that, so that's a good thing. We also have the generator, as you know, installed for city hall. They'll be connected soon. Power to the buildings will be shut off for a little while, but that's all being coordinated to have the least impact on fire and police. And they have a backup generator that they, they will retain power, so it's not like they're going to be without. It's just, they have to move the switch over. The good news is if we have another storm like we had in 2022 where everything was shut off, which hopefully we don't, but if we do, we'll have power at city hall. So that's a good thing. Next, I wanted to mention that the housing action plan is going to the planning commission for consideration on Monday. So that's moving forward. We will be in front of you soon. And last thing I wanted to mention, we received a request from WIREA8, and that's the Water Resources Inventory Group, to support Senator Murray's bill in the federal senate for floodplain restoration and enhancements, like streamlining the permitting process for wetland work would help us out in any number of ways. I talked to Jake about that earlier today. He said that it's bipartisan. Senator Danes from Montana is the co-sponsor and Senator Murray is a sponsor here and wanted to see if there was any concern with the city supporting that legislation as a participating member of WIREA8. It's simple, it, well, it's not simple, but it is, the effect of it is streamlining the permitting process for floodplain restoration issues. So happy to share more information. The reason I bring it to you tonight is the sign, the signatories have to be done by September 23rd. So just wanted to mention it. Happy to send you links and any information that you'd like.
Thank you, city manager. Okay.
You're not going to send us information and you're not going to tell us?
I, I don't think, I don't think I could summarize federal legislation tonight. Some, the summary is that it's intended to streamline floodplain restoration projects.
You can, you'll email or provide it in our updates tomorrow so that we will have more information, ability to look, review it, to be able to understand what the impacts are and, and then be able to respond by, so we'll have a deadline of-
September 23rd.
23rd that we need to respond by that time.
Yeah.
So we just found out about this?
I just heard about it yesterday afternoon, I believe.
Excuse me, yeah, we did. I, I got the request yesterday and forwarded to bring it up for today. So we just found out about it yesterday from, from WIREA8.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Page. So yeah, so we'll have an opportunity to review and then respond by the 23rd to, to sign on to the letter. And just to be clear, this is federal legislation that we're being asked to support and we're just signing on to a letter with others. And so I'm sure you'll have a, there's a copy of the, the letter or something that, that you'll be able to share so we know what we're signing on to.
Yeah. It's basically as a participating member of WIREA8, but I'll, I'll share the information.
Yeah. Very good. We'll look forward to seeing that. Any further questions, comments? If not, thank you, city manager. We are moving on. Okay, we'll move on to the council liaison reports. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On September 6th, I had a chance to go down to Lake Ballinger and check out our Community Food Forest Open House, which was a really neat opportunity to like actually visualize part of our recreation and open space master plan, I believe. And so it was like they, I thought they did a really good job of laying out, they had cones and labels about where different parts of the plan would go. And I just, I think seen in the space, I feel like I've advocated before that we need more field trips. It reaffirmed my perspective that we need more field trips because it really does, there is something, I mean, we can see a plan and we talk about them and we see maps, but I think when you're actually in a space and you can like envision it and the, the group that was there leading the effort, you know, did a great job of kind of walking through what the plan was, some of, you know, the things that they hope and envision. And I just, I thought that was a great use of a Saturday morning. And they also gave us all sorts of good treats. So there was both like, all sorts of like fresh fruits and like herbs and things that you would grow here locally, as well as like coffee and goodies, which is always helpful on a Saturday as you're trying to get going. So appreciated that. On the 11th, I was at our work session. The 13th was National Day of Service over by the Rec Pavilion this year. And, you know, again, appreciate all of our community members who turn out again and again to help make our community a better place. You know, it's nice hearing from staff, just especially staff that has worked other places, how special our community is. Because I know those of us who live here think that and, but it is always nice to have that affirmed by others in terms of like the folks in our community, they do, they come out and they give their time to make this community a better place. And I just, I'm always impressed by, you know, where things start at the beginning of the day and where things land. And so there was a lot of blackberry removal, there was planting of new both trees next to the Sonics Basketball Court, as well as some new flowers and other things around the Rec Pavilion. And so just big thank you to everybody involved with that project, as well as we got to fill up a bunch of paper bags with some sand to then use. That evening, I had a chance to go to our first luminary walk down at Lake Ballinger, which I thought was just a lovely event. So there was, for folks who weren't there, there was paper bags that were filled with battery operated little candles and they were, they lit the pathway, both the paved pathway down at Lake Ballinger, as well as kind of through some of the, the grass area. They had a band playing. It was just wonderful. There was all sorts of folks out, you know, young and old and it was just, it was a really nice way to spend an evening and again reaffirmed for me that I think evening programming is something we haven't done a lot of traditionally. And I think ways to activate our parks in the evening hours, particularly given how dark it is so much of the year here, I think is something that I would love to continue to advocate for and talk about here in the future. On the 16th, EASC Economic Alliance of Snohomish County had a coffee chat about workforce and housing. They influence each other, they're important, you need housing for people to work. So it was, I think, you know, things that we've, we've talked a lot about in this space, but I will say the one takeaway for me was this concept, or I guess new takeaway for me was this concept of a land bank, which is apparently something that has been used other places. I think Spokane is the only place in Washington that has passed something. But essentially when there's property like in foreclosure or, you know, that isn't, isn't being utilized, it, there's, it's a mechanism for, for repurposing that property in a way that is beneficial to the community. So there was some talk about, you know, just conversations about exploring whether that could be implemented other places in Washington, particularly Snohomish County. That evening, I had a chance to join the League of Women Voters and appreciation to them, they had a Celebrate Constitution Week and are still having one. I think there's one more event tomorrow as part of Constitution Week where they're actually reading the constitution. So they read the constitution and the Bill of Rights, had a chance to participate and be one of the readers at their event at the Edmonds School District Headquarters this week. And I will say, I don't know that I've ever heard the, the constitution and the Bill of Rights read aloud in its entirety, right? I know, like, you know, you, I've read it, but you know, it was really, it was different and interesting to hear it read aloud. I made my two children listen to it read, which I, you know, I hope they appreciate when they're adults someday. But I, I just, I applaud the League of Women Voters and the work that they continue to do to, to try to help ensure that we all have opportunities to, to learn. On the 17th, there was a virtual town hall for, to prepare for my week without driving. And it's not really my week, it is the week without driving. I know I've talked about it in this space, but I will encourage folks again, I think this is my last report and before that starts. So if you are interested, I would love for you to join me. If you are interested in even participating for a day, I think there's a lot of value. It was interesting. I think one of the things they shared, because they had folks from all over the country, rural and urban and just, you know, all sorts of different people and organizations. But I think they said what oftentimes holds people back is the worry that they're going to fail. And, and they're like, that is the point. Like they know that you are probably going to have a hard time, if you are somebody who is typically a driver, you're going to have a hard time not driving for whether it is a day or an entire week, if you, you, you participate in the whole thing. But that is really, that's where the reflection comes from, right? Like, why is it hard? Like, what are the barriers? What are the challenges that make it hard for you to give up your vehicle? And then remember, especially I think as decision makers, but I think folks, you know, we, there's all different ways that we commune, or that we impact our community and make decisions on behalf of our community. Lots of folks in our community cannot drive and that number is increasing. Young folks are delaying getting their license, we have an aging population, AARP's numbers were somewhere between five and 10 years at the end of our lives is kind of the average amount of time that most of us will not be able to drive. And though, we're talking about important members of our community, right? Our young folks and our seniors, like how are we helping them to still be able to live full and wonderful lives even if they're not driving? So anyway, I'd love to talk to folks more about it and would encourage you, there's also lots of information online, but would, would love to have anyone join me this year. So last night was also our monthly DEI Commission meeting. The big plug I would say is welcoming week. Hopefully folks are planning on joining us here out in the plaza on Saturday. 11 to 3 are the hours for welcoming week. It will be an opportunity to be together with community. There's a whole host of community partners and vendors. There's going to be a couple of food vendors, there's going to be a little bit of musical entertainment. It's going to be an amazing time and would just encourage folks to, to come out and participate that in that second annual event for us. It's also at the same time as the art show, which I'm sure Councilmember Ryan will talk about, but I think a good opportunity to come out and, and experience both here this weekend. And then I think last, when we talked about it yesterday, there was still some need for, for setup help and a, and more need for cleanup help. So if you are available, I'm sure Deputy City Manager would be happy to, to add you to her list. And then today, had a chance before our meeting, PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, had their regional transportation planning kind of open house. They're doing a number of those throughout the region, but their Snohomish County event was today up in Everett at Everett Station. And so had a chance to go to that for part of it and learn a little bit more about kind of the community engagement that they are doing for the regional transportation plan. So just like the plan we approved tonight, we have lots of different plans in different spaces and this is a regional plan about transportation, but there is an opportunity to provide feedback that'll be utilized as part of that plan. So I have pamphlets for the council and have a couple extra if anybody in the audience is interested, but there's also information online on PSRC's website. And that completes my report. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, madam. Councilmember Murray, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let's see, I, Friday the 5th, had the opportunity to join some of you at the Lindwood Neighborhood Center, which this council has helped support. We did a legislative tour. That was amazing. I'll just leave it there. On Sunday the 7th, I was invited to Evergreen Unitarian Universalist Fellowship in Everett as their guest speaker and did a sermon on volunteerism, which is also my way to apologize missing Dog Fest and a couple of other things on Saturday because I was still finishing up my sermon, so I couldn't make it to you. But you were in my thoughts. Wednesday the 10th, saw another fabulous, thank you, fabulous terrorist talk, great conversations, lots of questions. And I'll just leave it there because I know Councilmember Page was there. And also next day was Thursday the 11th. That morning, I joined the city manager in Edmonds where we had a very moving tribute for 9/11. For folks who don't know, down there, I believe it's Station 17, in front of their Veterans Park, actually. They actually have a girder from one of the towers. It's a very beautiful art display that they've created from that. So you don't have to wait till 9/11, it just go that one day, it's there. And I encourage folks to go and experience that. Later that evening, I didn't join you lovely folks here because I felt compelled to go up to Everett and join another 9/11 tribute. That one was called Monumental Talks. It was student driven, a lot of folks involved and long stories there, so I'll just leave it at that. I hope folks take that, never forget, very seriously. And then also that same day, the 11th, I did have my city manager meeting. So I'll just say that was a full day. 13th, you've heard some of this, we had the day of service. I was able to join, I, for a little bit, is what I will say, but I was there. I had helped then set up the bags for later that night, the luminary walk. And really just want to give credit to everybody who across, quite frankly, the nation, who took time to invest in their community. This was all together so that 9/11 tributes, the day of service, all of that is connected. And I'm sure there was some other stuff throughout the week that folks might have joined in as well. The 16th, I too sat in on the online conversation that EASC puts on, on housing. Just again, if you can't join, I don't know that's again, I'll say that out loud, I don't know if you sent it in your report, so I'll say it now. If you can't, bless you, if you can't make those, they do record them and they are, I have to have one that wasn't educational. Right before this one, they did one on childcare, which reminded me that we have a low income childcare facility hopefully in, in the works. I don't know where that status is, but nonetheless, just the, the dire need for childcare. So it was just, you know, getting conversations to think about everything everybody just said about crime and about a place, feeling like you belong. Quite frankly, the tree canopy probably ties into all of this. I, you know, if you don't have a place to live, it's really hard to appreciate life. I round that out with today and just in the form of appreciating life. I had the opportunity to go to Sultan today where PUD partnered with VOA to open up a side channel on the Sultan River. I'm sharing that, in essence, because we have Ballinger Lake and it's just wonderful to see the salmon, if you will, that, that, that chain that they're on, if you will, that in essence start, of course, at Lake Washington or whatever, make their way up. And we're part of that link, but to actually go up into the hills and actually just see that many salmon, I thought you had to go over to the Olympics to see that. And they're right there, but it's, it's a beautiful side channel. I bring that up not just to talk about how fun of a day this was and how amazing that was, but also to say I learned something new. They have what's called an adopt a stream program. So just putting that out there, I mean, we didn't have an adopt a park, we didn't have an adopt a drain six years ago. So for what that's worth, I, we've been doing some work around our streams. We do have the Ballinger Forum, which changed names somewhere along the lines, but nonetheless, we have a lot of streams and I thought to myself, I'll at least bring that, set that at your feet. You can do something with it, do something with it. But it was at least an interesting idea, especially with Hall Creek. I thought, well, at least keeping an eye on that one. We put a lot of time, energy and it's part of the link. It would make sense to at least start there if that's something folks are interested in. Don't know what that looks like, but apparently it's a thing. And can put you in touch with PUD if you're interested in that. And I do believe that that wraps up my report. We're going to go with yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On September 9th, Tuesday, attended the LAF One Retirement Board. And then the announcement is coming up tomorrow evening, there will be a private arts award and preview evening for the artists who have been juried into the art show. That will be here, it'll start at 6:30. Council's invited and everybody over there. Okay. And it'll be 6:30 to approximately 7 here. And then we'll go over to the library to preview the artwork. That's tomorrow, the 19th. On the 20th, that's where it's open for, to the public. Besides having welcome week here, we'll have the art show open to the public from Saturday to Saturday. So Saturday, the 20th to Saturday, the 27th. And that will be the hours of- will be the hours of the library. This is the 45th Annual Art Show. So, we've had 44 years of art shows here in Mount Lake Terrace, and they've always been a juried art show. Some people aren't quite sure what that means, so come on over and find out what a juried art show means. It's similar to Edmonds, if you go to Edmonds. There's not many around anymore besides galleries, that kind of thing, but as far as art shows go. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Councilmember Page?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. On Friday, the 5th, you know, I took the heart, had a tour over at the Linwood Community Center, you know, with other city officials and staff. We had a stake in the community center, and Councilmember Woodard, you know, really didn't let you all know just how much of a big part he played in it because he pretty much hosted, you know, all of us there and got us going and finished and wrapped us up. And so, kudos to you for what you did in representing Mount Lake Terrace. And then on Saturday, the 6th, I spent some time at the Community Food Forest, started up at Ballenger Park with members of the Parks and Recreation, shot some series of videos with Audrey for her to be able to use to explain what the Food Forest can be, and which I think was important because the vision that they have of the Food Forest, you know, you really don't see unless you are a Parks and Recs person, you know. But she had it all lined up, all outlined, just as, you know, as Councilmember Murray said. And, you know, had all these little flags and the plants and things for the kids to be able to go to and interact with. And, but more importantly, she was explaining to me what it's going to look like later, you know, and as it's developed and grows. So, I hope that, you know, not just supported from us, but the community really supports the work that they put into it because a lot of work definitely went into just that day. Also, then from there, same day, I went over and attended the Linwoods 44th Street Resource Fair. And I think the highlight there for me was I was able to share with the community a health option that was available to them during the day that I wasn't even aware of until like two days before, that I took advantage of. And then also, on the Saturday, the 6th, had a great time at Wag Fest. You know, I don't have a dog, not going to get a dog, but I sure enjoyed being with them dogs for a little while. Yeah, they were acting so good, and they were just so peaceful, and none of them were fighting with each other. And I was telling someone about the Wag Fest after having just left the 44th Street Festival, where they had all these resources over in Linwood for these kids. And these kids were just, the parents were chasing them, you know, because the kids were, "I want to go here. I want to go there. I want to go there." And they wanted to play with this. And then I go to the Wag Fest, and the dogs were doing the same thing. "I want to go here. I want to go here." And they jumping on the tables. So, it was just really, really nice to see, you know, be part of both of those things. But what really was a pleasure to see all these different, I think they had close to 50 vendors at Wag Fest, you know, that the chamber was able to bring in. And, you know, that's like two events now in a row that they've brought to the city and brought vendors from outside the city to do things in the city for the community. So, that was really good. Also, had my city managers' meeting on Wednesday, the 10th. And then on the 10th, I attended the Ray 8 Implementation Technical Meeting, of which I'm a member of, representing the city. And then Wednesday, the 10th, I attended the Terrace Talks with the police over at the police station. And one of the conversations that we had over there, again, went to domestic violence. And we were able to, from that conversation, create some more movement towards some resources that we can make available here in the city that we're going to discuss at the Chamber next get-together. And hopefully, we can get some momentum with that when we go there. And, you know, I know that the DVS, they're excited about the fact that we're excited about doing things with them. I know over at Getaway, you know, they're still can't wait, you know, for the event to happen, the 5th, 6th, and 7th. So, and again, because we was at the cops and clergy, and because they brought up the topic, we were able to expound on something that we hadn't even thought of beforehand. So, it was worthwhile going to that meeting. Friday, the 12th, I got opportunity to sit down with Patrick to review our meeting that we had that Wednesday with Ray 8. And again, it's a learning process for me. And we've got a Jim over there, and that young fellow, you know, he really knows what he's talking about. He's excited about it. He's passionate about it. And he was able to discuss what to expect in this meeting that we just had today with the Salmon Recovery Council that we also represent. I got also educated on some, just some environmental projects that we're doing right here in the city that I wasn't aware of. So, you know, this collaboration that we're doing together, working together, is, I really appreciate that. Saturday, the 13th, I spent time at the park for Day of Caring with the city staff. And we made a huge dent in one of those blueberry patches. You know, so that's all I'm going to say of that. And then Saturday, the 13th, I also helped out a little bit with the setup for the Luminary Walks and enjoy the evening event, listening, you know, to the blues band and just watching, you know, all the little kids, you know, once it got dark and the lamps started lighting up. You know, that was a fascinating thing to watch the little, little tykes, you know, doing, because they were just running to the lamp and just looking inside the lamps, trying to figure out where the light was coming from, you know. And it was just this big trail of lights. So, that was very cool. And then today, we attended Patrick and I, the Ray 8 Salmon Recovery Council meeting to review some of the legislative priorities for salmon recovery and Puget Sound watershed health. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Mayor Matsumoto, right?
All right. Thank you. Before I get into my report, I just wanted to just mention that Adopt a Stream has been around for a long time. I took that class about 25 years ago. Tom Murdock was teaching it at that time, and he's still there today. And I was even quoted in the Seattle Times when I took that class. So, it's been around. That's the Adopt a Stream up there by the park, up by 128th off the freeway. The 9th, September 5th, excuse me, I took the Hard Hat Tour of the Linwood Neighborhood Center and saw what a wonderful facility that is going to be. And I just can't wait for it to open. It's amazing. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard, for being a part of that. Also, on the 6th, I attended the Wag Fest. I have cats, not dogs. And I would love to have a cat fest, but I know that that's not going to be like the dogs. The cats are just not going to behave. And I, but there was some booths over there for cats. So, yeah, you can do anything. On the 16th, I attended the ESAC Panel on the Housing. It was the morning, excuse me, the ESA Panel on Zoom on Housing, and a very, very interesting subject that keeps being more and more interesting as we need more and more housing. But the panel did a great job. That afternoon, I met with the city manager, the Mayor Protim, and went on the tour that we gave to the Snohomish County staff member, Mike Fong, and, because he's in charge of economic development, and introduced them to what we're planning to do here in the Mount Lake Terrace. And on the 17th, I attended the South County Collaborators, which is basically the South County Cities, the Mayors and the Mayor Protims and Council Presidents. And there's city managers and staff, so forth. And we had guest speakers from Housing Hope and Hasko on housing and how to build. And I would like to have another whole section on that because that was the first time that I actually saw somebody give the reasons why housing costs as much as it does today and how we can still have affordable housing. But it is so much more complicated than anybody, even someone like me who's been working in this for a long, long time and knew many parts of it. But when you put it all together, it really, really is an eye-opener. So, hopefully, we'll have Hasko as a guest speaker, along with Chris Collier, at one of our future meetings so that the rest of the council can see that, too. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. So, I will conclude our council liaison reports by reporting on the 5th, I also attended the Volunteers of America Linwood Neighborhood Center opening, or Hard Hat Tour, I guess it was. And Councilmember Woodard was very humble and quiet, probably because he had his VOA hat on when he was doing the tour. But he's done really a fantastic job of working with the communities in particularly the South County region and helping organize the Linwood Neighborhood Center. And following up on what others have said, I mean, the Linwood Neighborhood Center is going to be a fantastic resource for our community. And so, appreciate all the work that you've done to really bring that, make that happen, and bring that to life and reality here in the South County region is going to be, as one of the directors of VOA said, it's going to be really a cradle to grave, provide cradle to grave services for our community, for residents, all the way from, you know, early learning resources and childhood engagement and programs to senior services and helping those in need and everything in between. So, it's going to be a great resource. Encourage, when it does open, hopefully, in the next couple of months, I think October-ish was the rough start date, opening date. And, but when it does open, I encourage all of our residents to take a look and understand what resources can be available there so that they can either take advantage of it themselves or direct others that are in need of those services to know what they are and be able to utilize that resource for our, for our South County region. On the 9th, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow's Exploratory Committee meeting, whereas just a reminder, that is our efforts through Snohomish County Tomorrow to really explore opportunities to expand the role that Snohomish County Tomorrow plays in serving our councils throughout the county and our residents throughout the county, and really identifying opportunities to do better. And right now, our focus areas are housing, economic development, transportation infrastructure, and Health and Human Services are going to be the key areas that we're spending a lot of time looking at. Housing, we've had a number of reports from Health and Human Services County Housing Division, and what complicated formulas there are to pull together funding for affordable housing projects and understanding how that plays. We are also going to be recommending the Hart Report, Housing Affordability Regional Task Force Report that was done a few, several years ago, but they got put on the shelf because COVID, and then everything else got into play. And now, we're recommending we bring that back. And there are a lot of great recommendations to address housing throughout the county. And I think it's time to get that off the shelf and put those recommendations back into play. So, we're going to be recommending that. Economic development is another area that we've spent a lot of time on and had presentations from the Economic Alliance and the Snohomish County Economic Development Team and a number of others from ports throughout the county and to the tourism, to other aspects that affect workforce development, and really understanding all the different players involved with economic development here at the county level. And we're recommending that we have more collaboration amongst those players and the cities and understanding how, what resources are available and how we can tap into those resources and utilize those resources and bring those resources to each of our communities to be able to help encourage jobs and workforce training and other opportunities that may be out there. And then transportation infrastructure, you know, we've got a great, through the inter-local coordinating committee, really addresses transportation projects and funding transportation projects for our local communities. But there's also a whole aspect of infrastructure, you know, beyond just roads, water, sewer, parks, you know, there are all those other aspects. And so, we're looking at expanding the review of and involvement and, again, more collaboration, more communication, and knowing what's going on in each of those different areas and being able to tap into that and make sure that we're all working together and on the same page. Although, a lot of, the theme is really running into more collaboration and more communication. There's, you know, a lot of different, all these different pieces, moving pieces are siloed, and we aren't talking to each other. And so, we're really interested in seeing more of us working together and collaborating and communicating, being aware of what's going on out there, and then being able to take advantage and utilize the different programs and services better. Anyway, so you'll probably be hearing me more, talk about that more. I just wanted to give a little more detail as to where we're at on the Exploratory Committee. We have several more meetings, and then we have the General Assembly for Snohomish County Tomorrow coming up in December, December 11th, I believe is the date. Encourage all of us to attend that. That'll be a full presentation about these and really allow for discussion so that we can get your ideas, others' ideas about, are we going in the right direction? Are we recommending the right things, right approaches? Or are there other things we need to be taking into consideration? So, encourage you to show up to that. But in the meantime, as co-chair of Exploratory Committee, I'd be happy to take any of your thoughts and ideas and make sure that they get incorporated in during our future discussions. Okay. Then, on the 11th, the mayor and I met with the city manager to talk about our city priorities, followed by the, our council work session on the 11th. On the 16th, as the mayor mentioned, mayor and I and city manager and our economic development director, Ryan Dos, did a tour of, with Mike Fong, the Snohomish County Economic Development Director, as well as Grace Yu, who's in charge now of sector development and business retention and expansion efforts for Snohomish County, and Trudy, who is in charge of tourism. So, we brought them here to Mount Lake Terrace and did a walking tour of a town center and really showed them what opportunities there are here in Mount Lake Terrace so that they can help, you know, share the word, spread the word about what we have going on here and be able to work, find opportunities to work together. So, we had a great discussion about that and opportunities there. Then on the, yesterday, as mayor mentioned, we had the Snohomish County Collaboration Meeting, where we had a great discussion about, from Housing Hope and Housing and Hasko, about how we can be working together, the South County region, to be bringing housing projects, affordable housing projects, to this area to serve our residents. And so, we've got, really had a great discussion there. They're going to be coming back with some ideas to be able to help us be able to move forward and deliver projects, which is really what it's about. And so, we're looking forward to that. We also had a great discussion about the, continued discussion about the asset management. We have a number of different assets that, that we don't all necessarily need to have individually. We can be working together and collaborating and, you know, we don't all, for instance, need a striper, right? We can have a striper that is shared with Edmonds and Linwood and Briar and other, you know, other cities in our South County region. And they may have another product or service or asset that they can share with us. So, that's, we're really taking a close look at how we can find economies of scale, work together on a number of different projects. We'll have more discussion about more of those things as we, as we move forward. But I just wanted to, again, highlight the progress we're making, working together as a South County region to address the needs of our residents, but at the same time, finding efficiencies and trying to reduce some costs. Okay, let's see. Then, we've got, oh, today, earlier today, the two co-chairs, myself and Mayor Protim, Stephanie Wignall from Mill Creek, met with the executive director of Snohomish County Tomorrow to kind of really lay out the next steps for the Exploratory Committee and what we're going to be talking about at our next meeting in October. we're going to be talking about at our next meeting in October. And that concludes my report. So, moving on, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sonmore has one more thing to add to her report.
I got to give my report. So.
Oh, I missed entirely. Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry.
That's why I put a little smiley face on your little note. It's all good. I'll be real quick, but they are important, too. So I just want to give a shout out. Again, Councilman Ryan and I attended our Left One meeting last week, and that was reviewing of claims. And then we had RPAC. And so I just want to give you a little bit about RPAC. And you did say Senator Cantrell was going to talk about flooding?
The bill is sponsored by Senator Murray. The bill is sponsored by Senator Murray.
But it was about flooding?
Flood plane restoration.
See, I knew there was a connection. So at our last meeting, we talked about flood planes. So that's where I heard it before. That's why I wanted to know, when did you last hear about it? So we did have a report out on flood planning, and we talked about, that's why I was trying to pull it up here, and it's Municipal Code 1615. So we talked about the comp plan vision of 2024, the critical mapping. And I was trying to pull up the presentation, and I don't have it. It wasn't sent to us, but it was fascinating to me because it showed Mount Lake Terrace and where all the flooding occurs in different areas. And one of our members, Keith Edholm, had said how his house floods. And I mentioned how our neighbor's house used to flood. And those weren't on the maps. And I think just over time, things have changed. But it was really fascinating to look at that. And then we talked about, let's see, the GMA growth and what it requires. And then there's five types of critical areas, starting with the wetlands, critical areas. And then we also talked about updating the code and the area adjacent to the critical area goes non-conforming codes, review of process clear and critical areas, strengthening mitigation, clarifying, monitoring of certain areas, consideration of increasing fines and penalties for, you know, clear cutting or doing something that might mitigate or cause flooding, and staying similar on more proactive areas and critical areas to put, oh, you can, there's a map, I guess you can put your address in to see what critical areas that are around your home. And then we also talked about FEMA's flood insurance. And so that was interesting. And the code is up on our website. We looked at it last, I think it was in 2020, and so that's why they're looking at it now. In Lake Ballenger, there's a picture on our website of somebody's house being extremely flooded before we fixed the stream over there. And then we had all sorts of conversations. Our meeting went about two and a half hours, but it's always fun to be there. We did discuss the pool schedule and how the pool, somebody had asked about, why don't we offer more lessons on Saturday and Sunday? And Ken explained how, right now, it's more cost effective to add open or where you can rent the pool. And he explained that to us. And then we talked about Dog Fest. And just a side note, I did attend Dog Fest, and I absolutely love dogs, and I have a dog. I'd have a cat, too, if I could. But it was, I was really impressed with on what they did, getting money from the hotel motel, but they had tons of other sponsors. And that's what we want to see when we give money out for hotel motel, is that they're not relying on the city to pay for the full event. And then they were able to have three bands there, and it was wonderful. I mean, they did an excellent job on that. And, and then we did talk about the food forest. And then we had a member, a new member, talk about the pool schedule and how confusing it is to sign up. And he even brought samples of how we can improve it. I was really impressed. And then we talked about how good the coffee is at the pavilion. I'm not a coffee drinker, but I thought that was a good ploy because they were always saying how good the coffee is. And then just for August, I did attend the Sustainability Task Force. And we did, I took a whole lot of notes here, and that's what I was frantically looking for. I just wanted to fill you in on what we're doing. At our last meeting, we talked about funding, accounting basics, fund types, Mount Lake Terrace funds and specific purposes, general funds, funding sources, revenue types such as taxes, property taxes, sale tax, utility tax, and gambling tax, and then where we collect the fees from, permits, licensing, rec services, utility rates, and intergovernmental funds. And one of the things we started talking about is how we can increase revenue, and that would be coming primarily probably through our neighbors, and looking at what it would mean increasing property taxes. And that's a place I don't like to talk about, but that's where we're going to probably dive in and just talk about it. And the people on the committee are wonderful, so I think they're going to do an absolutely wonderful job explaining that. And I was just going to tell, with 9/11, when Edmonds got their piece of the towers, our mayor was going to drive back and get a piece, and we so wanted a piece for Veterans Park, and we came this close. But I'm glad Edmonds has a piece of that. And I will never forget. I will, I was taking my daughter to school, I was stopped at a stoplight, and the news came on, and I thought I was going to lose my mind. It was horrific. And so when you say, "Don't forget," I will never forget. And I try and tell people that weren't alive during that time about what goes on. So I think that's really important, because, Rick, you brought it up at that meeting at 9/11. And I think that's really important to tell people what people went through. And being clear across the United States, you know, I didn't have any, knew of anybody but my husband's brother. They thought he was in there. And he always talks about the people he lost, and it has scarred him for life. And it's horrific. And the last thing I want to close on is a positive note. Mount Lake Terrace is looking for volunteers. It used to be the senior project. And I know one of the people on the committee is Naylin Sue, who is our basketball coach and a high school graduate from there. But if you want more about that volunteer project, let me know because I don't have it on this computer, but I can give you more information if you're interested in volunteering for the high school. And, oh, sorry, I did have a sneak peek. I really looked around, Rick. I'm sorry, when I was dropping off artwork, you need to go to the art show. It's going to be fabulous this year. So that's all I have to report.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore. Glad we didn't miss you. All right. So with that, Councilmember Ryan?
News alert. I have an addition. The art show has a special presentation this year. You can see it at the Welcoming Week. It will be, I don't know if it's already up. I helped set it up in the lobby. Oh, it's already set up? Okay. So it's going to be 60 sixth grade students from Mount Lake Terrace Elementary. Their art's going to be up on the board out here in the lobby. So something new we had with one of the parents of a sixth grader at Mount Lake Terrace Elementary. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan. Yes, so we'll use that as our transition into the next topic, as in upcoming, some exciting upcoming events with both Welcoming Week and the Juried Art Show coming up this week, starting on Saturday for the public. So look forward to welcoming everybody to those exciting things. With new business, do we have anybody with any new business? Councilmember Woodard?
I'll try to keep this short. Firstly, let me say, I did watch the recording, and my first reaction was, "Three hours? How did you all do that?" And here we are. So I just want to put that out there. Second comment was about, somebody wanted to do a cat fest. And I'm just going to tell you, after organizing about 40 of you elected officials into one space, you do not want to do that. Thank you. Thank you for the peanut gallery. But the real news here, and the absolute leave on a positive note, and I can't believe we made it all the way this far. No one brought this up. Happy anniversary to this beautiful building. Four years ago today, we ribbon cut just outside there, and finally got to come in and see our spaces. So congratulations. Hard to believe this building's been open four years now. That was it. Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, it's beautiful. Nothing's fallen yet. Hey.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Woodard. Any other new business? If not, I will happily adjourn this meeting.